Hello, everyone. Today is April 4, 2023, right? Yes. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Public Safety Committee meeting. I am Owen Zarin, I'm president. I see Council Derby and Council Gomez, are you sitting in as a...
If you need me to vote yours?
Okay, I don't know if there'll be any votes, but I'd be honored to have you as our third member tonight. We have minutes from March 23rd, 2023. Did you have a chance to look at that? I'll take a motion to approve those seconds. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion. Minutes approved from March 23rd. Great. Next, at this time, I'll take anyone from the public who would like to speak about, if not otherwise on our agenda. If you would like to speak, I am on our agenda. We will give you time when we get there. And I don't see anyone, so moving right along. Boy, we're cruising tonight. So next on our agenda was one of our Public Safety Department quarterly reports, and we are honored to have Chief Norris here from the Fire Department to chat about all the great things that are going on in his department. So without any pause, Chief Norris, would you like to enlighten us?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you again for all of your time. And certainly, I always look forward to these quarterly updates to just bring people up to speed, the community, and the city leaders as to what your Fire Department is doing and what the unbeknownst events are. I want to briefly touch on a few topics with personnel and some grants, and then I really want to focus in on this update on a lot of the different programs that the Fire Department are engaged in moving forward here. So right now, in terms of some personnel updates, very quickly, we're in the process of hiring one new firefighter based on the retirement from this past January, DSAPRON. Was our senior firefighter badge one retired back in January. Working with the mayor and her team, we're waiting for the new civil service list to come out. I actually today put in the requisition for that one position, and the list should be made available to us next week. So once that list is made available, we'll start going through the medical backgrounds, physical backgrounds, and bringing someone onboard hopefully before the end of this fiscal year. We currently have two firefighters completing their paramedic training at Greenfield Community College. We have firefighter Brendan Struthers and firefighter Tyler Polley are both completing their paramedic training. They're into their ride time. So I'm expecting tentatively them to be tested for their paramedic, maybe this June. So that'll be good to get that done and them onboard for their skills at the paramedic level. And then the two firefighters that we did hire a few months ago, we've been swearing in ceremony before your council. They're currently down at the Springfield Fire Academy. They started last week, and their graduation is June 9th. So their first week down there, they're doing well. So this is a quick update for personnel. In terms of budgets and grants and updates in regards to that, the one thing I just want to bring forward to the community and your committee was we do have still pending out there a fire prevention and safety grant that was submitted last year. It was in the amount of $58,000. And the funds from that would go towards the purchase of a LED sign, which I might be talking to Council Derby about more because I think I saw something about some criteria changing across the city for LED signs.
Yeah.
So this would be a three-by-seven LED sign out front of the public safety complex, and it would be parallel with the road. So I want to talk to you, I think, more about that, make sure I fall within the guidelines.
Guidelines will probably be changing a little bit.
Okay.
Because right now, that would be prohibited.
It might help inform the guidelines, but...
Okay. It would be prohibited?
As the ordinance currently stands.
As it currently stands?
Yes.
Not as potentially proposed?
So the proposed...
Maybe talk outside.
Talk offline. Yes. So yeah, so looking at the LED sign, I think having it right out there in front of the public safety complex, as well as the bike path right there, to use that as an opportunity to talk to people about fire safety messages, winter events, openings, closings, things of that nature. And then also, some of the funds would go towards the continuation of our smoke detector, carbon oximeter program, which I'll talk more about briefly as well.
How is that, I mean, that's a bolt, is that, you just like plug something into it and program what it's doing?
Yeah, my vision would be out there by that driveway. There's already a light post that has power going to that. So potentially working with Greg, Dr. Lemon, and his team, put in two pillar, concrete pillars there, put in that sign right there, and tap it into that electrical source on the pole there. Would be my initial thought.
Cool.
Some other quick updates organizationally. We should have the second new ambulance arriving next week. We did take delivery of the first one. Again, as reminded, we purchased two new ambulances. One was fully grant funded with a federal grant. The other one was supported through the mayor and the council through cannabis funding. So one ambulance came in about two weeks ago. That one is in service. The second one is being outfitted in Connecticut right now. I'm hoping to take delivery of that one next week. So once I have both of them up and running in service, I'll reach out through the council president and the mayor, and hopefully get all the city leaders there to come and take a look at those. I wanted to wait until both of them are there so you can see both units at the same time. So that's an exciting news coming forward. The West Hampton EMS contract, we are in year three of that contract, and we were able to renegotiate the deal. So July 1st, we have another three-year deal. The initial fee for that went up from $25,000 a year to $35,000 a year, and that will escalate each of the subsequent years as well.
So, okay.
So that's another three-year deal starting July 1st. And then the other new one that just recently transpired was we have a signed contract with the town of Southampton. Southampton actually reached out to us, and they were having some challenges sporadically with staffing over there. Based on their ambulance licenses, they're supposed to have staff in 24/7 paramedic level. They were having some staffing challenges. So basically, given the direction from the state, they signed the contract with us that basically says anytime they're not able to staff over there at the paramedic level, they call notify us, and when a call comes in, we'll go over there and respond, and we'll submit an invoice to them for $500 for each response. So that went into effect back on February 1st. And that contract goes until October 1st. So it was like an eight or nine month contract. All the annual service on the equipment and vehicles is needed right now. I always purposely wait, as you definitely know me, I purposely wait until the last quarter of the fiscal year just to make sure there's no major expenditures in terms of engines blowing or the funds need to go to something else. So to give you examples, like the self-contained degree of apparatus, those need to be annually serviced. That's being done, the ground ladders need to be tested. Our three pumps, the ladder, the two engines, those had their annual service done just yesterday. So it's that type of equipment and vehicles that are having annual service done on all of that right now. And then in terms of some equipment that we're purchasing or taking delivery of, the big talk across the country right now is a bunch of vehicles, and communities go green, which is a great initiative. However, with that comes some additional operational challenges. And one of the things from the fire side when responding to these vehicles is when these cars get into accidents, they have potential, like any vehicle, to catch on fire. And when those batteries catch on fire, they go into, probably what you heard, it's called thermal runaway. And depending on what research you look at, this can take upwards of 20,000 to 30,000 gallons of water to fully suppress based on the confinement of the water trying to get to those battery packs. So we actually took delivery of, the easiest way to explain it is almost like a thermal blanket. And the cost of that was $1,700. Basically, two firefighters, if this was the vehicle right here, two firefighters could move each side, they pull the blanket over, it's like a weighted blanket, and then you go around and tuck it in with a pipe pole, and hopefully smother that fire and keep that fire contained and not go to any exposures. My thought process is what we did was we purposely bought just one of them.
Go ahead.
Is that type of, no called blanket, is that one of the terms? Is reusable, is only one type?
So my intent was you could buy a reusable one for $3,500 or a one-time use and dispose of afterwards. So what my intent is, we bought one that is one-time use and done. And what I'll do is in the event we use it, we'll use it, we'll suppress the fire, and then I'm going to build the insurance company to replace it for another one. So that is my thinking in terms of trying to be cost-effective, but still meet the demand out there in the community. And then the other thing that we purchased is it's basically a huge plug, and it plugs into, it's a universal plug that plugs into any electric vehicle. And it basically, when you go to a car accident, it de-energizes the car right away. So in terms of responder safety, we don't have to worry about, you know, it's quiet anyways, and the torque on these electric vehicles is extremely significant compared to the gasoline. So it de-energizes it completely and renders it safe so no one's going to get run over or hit by it with that. So when the counselors come over to see the ambulances, I want to show you those two new pieces as well. But that's at least the reason why. So that blanket was like $1,800, and that plug was $925. And I took delivery of both of those today. So I'll be happy to show those whenever it comes over.
I have a quick question just about this.
Yes, sir.
So I know that you've been seeing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you've definitely been seeing increases in callbacks with your, with your call volume. Is that true?
Yes.
So you're already in that situation. Would you, how, I mean, if you send a crew out to Southampton, that's also gonna... I mean, we're getting paid for it, obviously, right?
Yes.
But that's going to add to, you're going to probably see callbacks increase, is that...
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So, and it's a good question to bring people up to date on and the community on is, right now, based on the signed contract with West Hampton and the union agreement, when we go to West Hampton, we automatically recall two personnel for any and every call. And then the other time that we put in place in the fall of 2021 was recall to US personnel anytime we go to a hospital other than Cooley Dickinson and Hoyok. The reason for that is, looking at the statistics, what we found is not only is the severity increasing because of going to base day in the trauma room or the cardiac cath lab down there, the time that two people, sometimes three firefighters are out of service doing that call is upwards of at least a minimum of 90 minutes to two hours from the time they go to the incident, travel down there. The significance of the injury, getting the ambulance cleaned back up, transferring care, and then coming back here is a 90 to 120 minute window. So if we have personnel at the station, staff that five for the day, now we're down to, if two people go, we're down to three. And then looking at the data, 35% of our call volume is concurrent calls. So 35% of the time, while they're down there, another call's going to come in, two more people, the three remain in our left. Now we'll give this one person back for any type of coverage. So that's kind of the rationale and reason, trying to maintain our mission of fire and EMS services. Right now, we're relying on a callback to maintain that balance. If we go to Cooley Dickinson and Hoyok, the question people ask is why don't you call back for those calls? Those are a quicker turnaround time. We consider those in our service area. And a lot of times, they may be clearing Cooley Dickinson Hospital, and A1 could get toned down for another call and respond from North Hampton Street somewhere and get there still in a reasonable time. So that's kind of the reason behind that.
Do you anticipate, do you have any idea of what the increasing call volume might be with Southampton?
It won't be bad. Looking at the data over the last three years, we average going over there 120 times a year already.
Just for mutual aid?
Just for mutual aid. So this contract wasn't a request of ours. It was actually directed from the state when they had their ambulance license renewed. The state came in and said that you need to change something. So it was kind of directed at the state, posed on them. So we're kind of working with them. We also used it as an opportunity to look at some different grant funding out there as well for equipment and resources that may help us by having that contract also.
Okay, so any questions from the counselors at this point, too?
And then the last part, I wanted really to kind of focus in on tonight for updates. There's so many, when you look at the Fire Department, Fire and EMS Department in terms of people tend to focus on emergency response, which is our main mission. But a lot of people, I don't think, have the opportunity to really realize the other programs that are going on out there. So I wanted to walk this group in the community through some of the programs that we're extremely excited about, that we've been doing out there. So the first one I have is the car seat installations. We've now, for the last two years, we have four personnel trained to the car seat technician level. And people at first are kind of quizzical, like, wait a minute, you have to be trained to a technician level? And honestly, when you look at all the different makes and models of car seats and all the different makes and models of vehicles and trying to find that compatibility, it's extremely difficult. And across the country, we continually see a lot of injuries associated with infants and children related to motor vehicle accidents and the improper installation of these car seats. So over the last year, we have easily installed and checked more than 50 car seats. Coincidentally, just yesterday, we had a person right up here at Wilson Avenue. They're having their first child, their due date is next week. And through their doctor's office, they were asked if they had somebody checked their car seat yet. So they called us, and everyone was out. So I actually went out and did it, I'm one of the four trained. I went out and did it. And that was just yesterday from a couple here at Wilson Avenue. So the demand is, I think, is growing more and more. I think the demand's growing more and more because just through word of mouth, people are starting to realize the service that's available more and more. Our next one, we're going to try to plan with Cultural Chaos on June 10th, I believe it is. So we're going to try to do a promotion that day as well, let people out in the community to have them stop in and get their car seat checked. But that program is going extremely well. The one that's getting a lot of attention recently is the fire extinguisher training. We've done four classes now. We've partnered with the Council on Agent to help promote this and organize it. We have two scheduled, one at the end of this month, and then one the first week of May. The one at the end of the month is already full with 20 people. And I've heard that the one in May is already half full for the second class. This class is going extremely well. It's focused on the residents in East Hampton and teaching them obviously the proper use of a fire extinguisher through grant funding. We also, as a takeaway, give them a fire extinguisher for their home, and we offer to come by if they wish and actually install that for them to help them with that. So that's a very popular program that's continuing over the next couple of months here as well. The student awareness, fire education in schools, our safe program in the schools. Firefighter Kyle Gagnon oversees that program. He's already done, he's worked with the gym teachers at East Hampton School as well as all the classroom teachers to coordinate those lessons. And he'll be reaching out to that same group of administrators this week to do one more focus round going into the last part of the school year as well. So that's going extremely well. And kind of dovetailing off of that same one is the senior safety program through the Council on Agent. We have a number of programs working with them as well. I went up there this past winter. I did a presentation on the importance of the file of life as EMS providers going into people's homes where we look for that information for the file of life, how the property fill it out, and things of that nature. I talked about the fire extinguisher training. And then we're looking, going into July, doing a fall prevention program as well. When we looked at our medical calls, 20% of our medical calls are fall-related. So if we can identify those and figure out the reasons why they fell and maybe put some other mechanisms in place to minimize those recurrence in the future, that's the goal going into the next fiscal year or now.
So is that, is that the program that Deputy Benson had proposed?
That is correct. That is absolutely correct.
Cool, it's good to see that again.
He did the promotional, and that's the one that we're now moving forward on.
Wonderful.
So it's going, we're excited about that. CPR and EAB classes, this again, very happy with this. Captain Matt Sanders coordinating this. And since this past January, he's coordinated with the East Hampton schools. And at a minimum right now, we're having 15 teachers come in a month, and we're getting them certified in CPR. And we have at least one class a month through the end of June scheduled to teach them CPR. So in addition to the schools, we're doing also some community public outreach for CPR classes as well. The East Hampton Housing Authority, we have a fire safety presentation planned for them in the first week of May. We worked with Director Walker up there to do that presentation. We'll talk about home safety there, some cooking safety. A lot of facility, not East Hampton, but a lot of housing authority built across the country have some cooking challenges and cooking fires, so we'll speak to that as well. Deputy Benson, he did the late community presentation back in the fall time. That went very well, talking about some of the presentations, fire safety messages. The East Hampton Neighbors Group, they reached out to me back a few months ago. And tomorrow, I'm going to start promoting the oxygen safety campaign and people with home oxygen, twofold. Number one, a lot of these units are obviously dependent upon electrical needs. And we're going to start developing a database. So when we have any long-term power outages, we can identify those and prioritize those people. So in the event they're going to be without power for a while, we can make sure through the Fire Department that we get resources to them, whether it's our own oxygen cylinders or maybe some portable generators through EMA to help them spell that duration of power outage. And the other one is, in a fire response, having the knowledge and information that if there's home oxygen at these facilities in the event of a fire, that's going to take that potential, that fire, and escalate it that much more. So having that information for the first responders will also be critical also. So I'll roll that one out tomorrow. We've got a house number and project coming up with the Council on Agent. Again, when you look at emergency responders, police, fire, EMS, and the critical importance of having the information readily available for house number. A lot of homes, particularly in the outskirts of the city, don't have the reflective numbers. So we're going to be working with our partners at Police, Tri-Act, Fire, and Council on Agent to do that in early May as well. The memory and understanding with the schools. So Superintendent Dr. Allison McClair reached out to me back in January. And at that time, and I believe they still are, they've had some challenges maintaining the proper ratio for nurses in the school. If I remember correctly, having it in front, I believe that they were trying to maintain one nurse per 500 students at each location. And just through sickness of vacations and other logistical challenges, they've had some needs to help fill that role. So during COVID, we actually worked with the nurses, with our paramedics and the nurses, providing similar care. So we now have, as of January through the end of this June, remembering and understanding with the schools. So if there's a nurse shortage and they can't first try to fill it with a nurse as a last resort, we will go in there and provide that coverage as a paramedic as well. So we have that going. Along the same lines, the community paramedic program. So Governor Healy, through her executive office, made effective as of May 11th that the COVID emergency is basically stopping as of May 11th. And with that, a lot of communities didn't realize in terms of their vaccine clinics that if you don't have a community paramedic program, those paramedics in those communities cannot administer any vaccines. It's not within our normal scope of service. So we applied for and received through the state our community paramedic license. So now, through the Board of Health and assisting them with these initiatives, we can continue to do the paramedic vaccines. As I know, you are aware, you've done a lot of them with us.
Always have been, huh?
So we can, we can continue that because a number of our paramedics over the last three years have provided significant support for those clinics. So that's one that we're very proud of in terms of community paramedic programs having that in place. Looking at Fire Department Open House, we've done, we're looking at one again. I mentioned the car seat program on June 10th. We're looking to tie that with an open house. We've got some school tours coming up. I know Williston reached out to us initially, some of their private schools reached out to us to do some tours. We hosted a couple of regional EMS programs for all of Hampshire County. We also applied for a regional EMS grant for Hampshire County. We hosted a regional tabletop exercise for the Mass Emergency Management Agency this past fall. We had North Hampton, Southampton, East Hampton, I think West Hampton showed up. I think this one, the community. So we are able to be the regional leaders for those areas. And then looking down at the last couple I just want to talk about is the Sharps disposal program. We have the Sharps disposal container in the public safety hallway there. We oversee that, we help publicize that through our Sharps disposal on ambulances. We maintain that, we dispose of those properly. And we're averaging about four gallons a month from the community in terms of Sharps disposal, which is a great program that sometimes doesn't recognize that all of that, all those Sharps aren't laying around out there on the streets. We want people to come and dispose them properly with us. And then the last one, looking out at the water here. Working with the mayor and her team, she brought forward, was there something that we could do in terms of fire and EMS for mitigation of people potentially going through the ice? And this year certainly was challenging because people were excited to get out there, but there were certainly a lot of times where it absolutely was not safe. So looking across the way here, we were able to reach out. We purchased three buoys. We have those strategically deployed around the pond here. So in the event, whether it's an ice rescue or a water rescue, during those critical first moments, if the public is available, they now have those resources to at least do some sort of effective rest of operation.
Okay, so where are they actually?
I'm looking at one right at the corner there. There's one on the other side. And we also have one over by the Eagle ramp as well.
Great.
So we tried to, to the best of our ability, make them publicly readily available and also strategically deployed in areas where it's of high use for the pond. So that's why I just wanted to kind of take the focus of today and really just bring the community leaders up to speed and the community itself. A lot of these programs that, I'm extremely proud of our personnel and just aside from not only their emergency response, but these other programs. When you look at having people prepared and trying to mitigate emergencies, certainly these programs are meeting that need in the community, and we're extremely proud of these services that are being provided out there. So certainly happy to answer any of the questions that there may be out there. That's kind of what I'm focusing on today with all of these programs.
Great. I guess my only question is the vaccine clinics, does that exclude flu clinics? Or is that included?
I wrote the, I wrote the application for both flu and vaccines. So any, any type of vaccine out there, whether it's a COVID-19 vaccine, any type of flu administrations that are out there, I wrote the application very broad. So that is good for two years. We'll have to renew it. And just as a side note, we are the only community in Western Mass that has this approval right now. So our paramedics are exceptional, and we're very proud of that also.
Just on the tabletop, I'm curious what the scenario was?
So ironically, it was a snowstorm in January. School was in session, and they had to get dismissed early because of the incoming snowstorm. And by kids getting dismissed early at the last minutes, notification of parents and care providers, notification of bus companies, then the buses, a couple of them got in accidents. We had some power lines down, and it all happened on Hoyok Street. And ironically, that tabletop was done this past fall. It was facilitated by MEMA. The dates they picked, they were off by one day for a snowstorm that we had here.
Was it the heavy snowstorm that made us have power out?
It was right in January where, it wasn't this last heavy snowstorm, but it was in January, they're off by one day. And again, we had about five or six communities in there. MEMA facilitated it, and I'm looking to continue that, to make that an annual event. Because it certainly, we talk about coordination, it impacts all of our neighbor communities around this as well. So again, when you look at the city of East Hampton, there's a lot of things being stood up where East Hampton is looked at as the regional leader. there's a lot of things being stood up where East Hampton is looked at as the regional leader. And these exercises certainly have proven them.
Anything else? Well, chief, your reports are always welcome and very thorough and thoughtful. I appreciate it. So figure out, what is this equal? Trying to figure out what I want to do about the SOR. I don't know. We could talk about it. If there's anything, we'll figure it out.
For what it's worth, I would be happy to defer to the fall time.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking. I think we all can use it.
I absolutely enjoy these, not only your team, but also updating the community. We want people understanding all the good things that are going on out there. And again, as we kind of wind down this opportunity today, certainly we encourage people, please stop by the fire station. It's the community's fire station. We want people stopping by. We want community leaders stopping by. So the doors absolutely are always open.
I'm of the same mind. Unless, if there's something going on, you're always welcome here, but I don't mind waiting to the fall to talk to you again. Cool. All right. Question? Yes?
First, thank you for the report. I think you always do a great job of not just running the fire department. I think bringing the report and being so clear with this committee, I think that's, that's really good. How the community can contact the fire department for any of these trainings or events that you guys are doing? I mean, we know that we can stop there anytime. But if someone is watching this video eventually or after Congress or SOR gives a report, if any numbers, any plays that we can tell the community, reach the fire department here? Because this is where you can find where they're providing for the community.
Yes. Excellent question. And we always direct people, they can either call the non-emergency lines and our administrative assistant Brenda Ruth here. Brenda usually does the, in conjunction with some kinds of council on agent program. Brenda will do the signup list. And then also our emails are another, if people have access to email, they can email us. The non-emergency line and then certainly the other one that's available to the community is dispatch. If any of their non-emergency lines are dispatched, they can call there and also be forwarded to the fire department side. Lock-ins. So yeah, we want to, any other options that people have for trying to engage as many people as possible. We try to keep it as simple as possible. So through those phone lines, non-emergency lines, we best avenue.
This is your, is this a non-emergency?
Yes, it is.
I think it's good for the community to know.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're looking for as much engagement as possible.
Thank you.
Awesome. Anything else for the chief?
Oh, thank you all for your time and what you do for the city. Greatly appreciated.
What was that?
I, story was odd, so.
Mayor knew one of us. This computer is really smart.
That just worked out the way it did. Well, thanks a lot, chief.
Absolutely. Thank you all. So have a great night.
See ya. That was fun.
Yeah. I like hit a button. I don't really have, let me just look at this because I don't think there's much to talk about. The only thing I just wanted to bring up is that the, the electric speed monitoring signs, I think we've come to consensus in the, in the committee. I think we agree that they'd be helpful. We've had both the police chief and DPW in here. They agree that they'd be helpful and that they want them. I don't know if there's much more to do with them other than maybe type up a report. We had suggested some streets that we were going to, that we thought they'd be helpful on. At this point, I feel it's in DPW's hand if they're going to put in a request for them. So I mean, I was just going to maybe type that up for, and I don't think the council would need to vote on it. We were just going to, I was just going to write it as a memo, put it in a packet and then remove it if, unless you have other thoughts.
Because they're replacing the existing to be digital or how that?
No, it was more just a proposal to, to start including more of them permanently. And so we had talked to police and DPW about some strategic deployment on like, starting the main arteries. So like Holyoke Street, East Street, North Hampton Street, maybe Line and Park, North Hampton Street, if I already didn't already say that. And you know, they agreed, but it's really comes down from, after us, it really comes down to a request from DPW for them. So there's not much more to do with that. I mean, I could keep it in committee and, but I was thinking we could just type up a report that we agreed that, we agreed on it. We had consensus from, you know, police and DPW and I could send that to police and DPW because it's up to, they have to request the money from the mayor. So unless you have any other thoughts on how to handle that, I don't know if there's much else to do with it at this point. Okay. So I'll type something up for the next packet. And then I'm not at city council tomorrow, so we just have to set a public hearing for. Yeah. So just have to set a public hearing for the, the no parking on the street.
Okay. That will be second meeting in April or?
Yeah, right. Yes, yeah. And then, yeah, I mean, there's not much else to report. Just that police and fire gave us reports. You can look at them now. It depends on what you want to say, but I don't, I don't think there's much else. So, and then I got a, it was interesting. I got a request from a reporter today to comment on the.
Man itself?
Did you get that also?
I got it too.
And I was, I think they didn't understand. I explained to them this has been a long term.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Yeah. And then I'm just working with the chief of police to finalize some things we could put forward from the ordinance review committee, speed signs, quick actions. That's kind of, so yeah, any, any other comments or questions? Okay. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'll second that. Paul in favor to adjourn?
Hi.
Hi.